And we're ready whenever you ask.
Good evening, and thank you for remotely attending tonight's city council meeting. Camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in their upper right hand corner. When we reach the point of meeting where the public has the opportunity to speak, you can click on that button and have your opportunity to get some. Please stand before the touch of allegiance. Anthony, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Councillor Dillabaugh.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Here.
Councillor Powers. Councillor Reisch.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
So councillor Powers has to be excused, he's dealing with some prison enclosures, things like that. Can we excuse councillor Powers?
Yes.
Good. I think it's important for our expert.
We do not have any presentations tonight. We do not have any publications tonight. So this brings us to personal appearance at this time, anyone attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature.
The first individual is registered as Margaret Hagerty, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted. Can you hear me?
Hold on, hold on.
We can hear you, but you have a lot of feedback on your end.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's better.
First of all, I'd like to do a huge shout out to veterans, our Veterans Day coming this week. The, what I really wanted to say now, though, is about the SAFER grant. For the fiscal year 2020, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, a SAFER Act, there's a reference number for it, but it says, Dear Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program applicant, on behalf of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Grant Programs Directorate, I would like to thank you for applying for assistance under the fiscal year 2020 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER Grant Program. Unfortunately, after careful consideration and review, we are unable to fund your application. We regret that the news could not be more positive. As you are aware, the SAFER program is among the Department of Homeland Security's and FEMA's most competitive grant programs. In fiscal year 2020, FEMA received over 1,300 SAFER program applications requesting more than $2 billion in federal assistance. The large number of applications received and the finite amount of available funding resulted in many commendable applicants not being funded and accentuates the highly competitive nature of the program. FEMA encourages your organization to apply for funding through the fiscal year 2021 SAFER program. Given the high number of applications received, the SAFER program is unable to provide your organization with an individualized comprehensive review of your application. However, we can tell you that our application, that your application did not score well with the preliminary assessment. The scores from the second phase of review, the peer review panel, indicated that your application narrative was deficient in the level of details needed to receive a competitive rating. There are several other tools and resources available to help fire departments and volunteer interest organizations develop the effective SAFER program grant applications. I encourage you to make use of these resources as you prepare your next grant request. I just wanted to make sure that I share that because I know it's been asked at a couple of meetings and I hadn't heard anything back. I don't know if anybody else did. Thank you for taking my call.
I do not see any other hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 19-2021, the amount of $453,401.11. Library warrant Number 19-2021, the amount of $8,897.54. The Capital Fund Warrant Number 19-2021, the amount of $1,407,287.63. And Community Development Warrant Number 19-2021, the amount of $0. And Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 19-2021, the amount of $0, as audited, be and same hereby, by order taken.
Second.
Any discussion? Anthony, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a resolution to approve the sale of surplus property formerly known as Paper Cherry Street East, following the public auction held on October 28th, 2021. Whereas the city of Augsburg has by ordinance dissolved the easternmost portion of Paper Cherry Street via Bill Number 57 of 2021. And whereas the sale of this portion of former Paper Cherry Street will be subject to the restrictions of a permanent easement to be written into the deed to allow for future infrastructure to be completed as needed by the city of Augsburg. And whereas said parcel was publicly auctioned on Thursday, October 28th, 2021, whereas all property sold by the city of Augsburg is as is and where is, by a quick claim deed, the city makes no warranty as to clear title or condition. And whereas all property within the city of Augsburg is subject to the provisions of enforcement of Chapter 97, Section 13, Property Maintenance. And whereas sale of surplus property promotes the return of underutilized property to the tax rule for the greater public benefit in keeping with comprehensive planning goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approves the following sale. Tax map number 59.031-3-27. Location is former Paper Cherry Street. The restrictions, this is a conforming parcel in the city's moderate density residential zoning district, being approximately 63 by 704 feet, and will be subject to permanent easement held by the city of Augsburg for future utilities. The sale price is $2,500, and the buyer is Timothy and Katie Wilone. Be it further resolved that the sale of said city-owned real property shall be subject to the review and approval of the city attorney.
I'll move that. I'll second it.
Discussion?
Do we know how much the legal cost is for putting in the easement on the sale?
I do not have a confirmed cost on the actual easement from the attorney.
I just wonder if the $2,500 will cover it.
I do believe that it will cover it.
Okay.
Anthony, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city historian Julie Madlin.
Good evening. I'd like to make a few remarks, and then I'll read the resolution, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Zeke Montroy was born in 1936 in Augsburg, son of Albert and Elizabeth Perkins Montroy. He attended St. Mary's Academy and Augsburg Free Academy. He married Patricia Gallup in 1958 in Watertown. During his career, he was employed on the St. Lawrence Seaway, Diamond National, and later as a postal carrier in Augsburg, where he was shop steward. After retirement, he worked as an electrician. Zeke loved playing sports. He won numerous titles and championships in bowling and throwing horseshoes, where he was inducted into the Horseshoe Hall of Fame and held the title of third in the world. He was a leader in the creation of the Green Belt Horseshoe League in 1985. In any sport where he was involved, Zeke was there to play and believed in setting up rules and following them. As an officer in the league, he expected players to do the same. Longtime newspaperman Chuck Kelly was a regular observer at the horseshoe pits. He stated that the Green Belt Horseshoe League was the most successful recreation program in the city. Dan, Zeke's son, said that his father would be honored to have the park named after him. But in looking at Zeke's effort to create and maintain the league, it is our honor to recognize his years of service to city recreation. Resolution designating the horseshoe pit area near the Elsa M. Luxick Municipal Pool as a Zeke Montroy Horseshoe Complex after the late Zeke Montroy. Whereas city historian Julie Madlin met with the family of Zeke Montroy and Robert Breen to discuss a proposal to designate the horseshoe pit area near the Elsa M. Luxick Municipal Pool as a Zeke Montroy Horseshoe Complex after the late Zeke Montroy. And whereas Mr. Montroy died on February 24th, 2021, at the age of 85, following a career as a mailman in the city of Augsburg, as well as a horseshoe champion. And whereas Mr. Montroy was extremely instrumental in the establishment of a horseshoe league in the city of Augsburg and the development of the original horseshoe pits near the former community center in the Green Belt area. And whereas Mr. Montroy was inducted into the Horseshoe Hall of Fame, was a state champion, placed third in the world championship in his division, and at the time of his death was the best horseshoe pitcher in the area. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby designates the horseshoe pit area near the Elsa M. Luxick Municipal Pool as the Zeke Montroy Horseshoe Complex after the late Zeke Montroy.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think it's wonderful. And, you know, it's a great thing when you get to name a complex or something after the person who brought it about, and Zeke worked very hard to do that. So I think I might even have to join the horseshoe league next year.
They would love that.
I believe it was Doug Loffler that recommended this.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Doug for bringing it forward as well, and bringing it to our attention.
I had no idea. Would you say he was the number two or number three in the world?
Yeah.
Wow, wow. Amazing.
Yeah.
Very nice job. Thank you. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Steve Jolly.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a New York State DOT undertaking agreement to allow the 2021 Holiday Light Up the Night Parade route to be designated as State Route 68.
I'll move that.
Second it. I'll second it.
No, this is a great event. We've participated and attended for many years. The community loves it, so I think it's a great, great thing to have again this year.
Absolutely.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Steve Jolly.
Resolution to establish a public hearing date for the 2022 preliminary budget for the city of Augsburg. Resolution establishing a public hearing for the 2022 budget for the city of Augsburg. Be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby establishes a public hearing on the preliminary budget of the city of Augsburg for 2022. Said public hearing to be held at 6:00 PM on November 22nd, 2021, in the city council, city council chamber, city hall. And be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such public hearing by publication in the newspaper so designated for the publication of legal notices at least seven days before the hearing date of notice setting forth the time and place and describing the proposed resolution in summary form.
I'll move that. Got it? I'll second it.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Steve Jolly.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on local law to amend Chapter 177, Sections 5 and 6 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Sewer Rates. Be it resolved that proposed local law Number Blank of the year 2021 entitled Amendment to the Augsburg Municipal Code, Chapter 177, entitled Sewer Rates B, and it hereby is introduced before the city council of the city of Augsburg, New York. Be it resolved that the city council will hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the city council chambers, 334th Street, October, New York, Augsburg, New York, at 6:00 PM, November 22nd, 2021. Be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such public hearing by publication in the newspaper so designated for the publication of legal notices at least seven days before the hearing date of a notice setting forth the time and place and describing the proposed local law in summary form.
I'll move that. I'll second it.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Steve Jolly.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on local, on a local law to amend Chapter 215, Sections 39, 40, and 41 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Water Rates. Be it resolved that proposed local law Number Blank of the year 2021 entitled Amendment to the Augsburg Municipal Code, Chapter 215, entitled Water Rates B, and it hereby is introduced before the city council of the city of Augsburg, New York. And be it resolved that the city council hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the city council chambers, 334th Street, Augsburg, New York, at 6:00 PM on Monday, November 22nd, 2021. Be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such public hearing by publication in the newspaper so designated for the publication of legal notices at least seven days before the hearing date of a notice setting forth the time and place and describing the proposed local law in summary form.
I'll move that.
Second.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager of planning and development, Andrea Smith.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Paris Excavation for the Marina Dock Improvements. Request for bids Number 2021-005. Whereas the city of Augsburg solicited bids to improve the existing Dubisky Center docks, specifically the steel piles and floats on the docks along the northern portion of the marina. Whereas Paris Excavation, Inc. of Messina, New York has proven their capacity and ability to perform the work to the city's satisfaction. Now therefore be it resolved that the city manager or his designee is authorized to enter into a contract with Paris Excavation, Inc. for a sum not to exceed $281,000 for the Marina Dock Improvement Project. Be it further resolved that expenses for this project will be charged to Capital Project H711002, consisting of the following. General fund expenditures and state and municipal facilities, SAM grant 6361.
I'll move that.
Second. So this would replace the steel pipes, and when it says floats, that's the docks?
It's the actual floats under the docks.
Like the plastic floaters that are all, like if you walk out there, like they're half out of the docks. Like, and then the docks are kind of like this.
Okay. So they're probably gonna take the docks rate out?
Yes.
Adjust it and fix them up?
Yeah, it's, it's long overdue, especially after the high water we had a few years ago, really did some significant damage. And people pay good money to be in the marina, so it should at least, should minimally be done. And I really like that it be completed before the opening of the marina on May 1st. So I think that's a great aspect of pointing out as well.
So we have a shortfall of $97,000? So basically, we have to come up with the other 97s?
Excuse me, we do, and prior to, so Andrea and Shane did good staff work on this. We've determined what the shortfall was. We were working on an internal way to be able to do this if we didn't have the funds, but we've got, we've got, we've got ample funds in the budget that haven't been used in other places to fund this. I'm, I'm concerned about Shane doing it only because, as Councillor Kennedy just mentioned, we have to get the removal work done now, like right now, before the ice comes in to have any chance of getting the new stuff back. And we can't start the project in the spring and do the removal and the, and the entrance. So I think certainly our DPW staff could rally and get it, get it done if we needed to, but we'll also be taking them away from everything else. We've got a water project going on down to Diamond National. Snow is gonna hit any day, so I wanna go ahead and, and just fund this out of, out of surplus money in the 2021 budget and get this going. So we've got it, we get all the work done in the fall that needs to be done, so first thing in the spring, they can do the, the improvement work. And we, and again, I, there's no, certainly no guarantee, obviously depends on the winter and ice out and things like that. But, but this gives us the best chance to, to not disrupt the boating season.
Well, this does go along with, you know, our plans of refurbishing the city, you know?
Oh, I understand. I just, I'm thinking, you know, 212 Franklin, or 212 Fourth Street's coming on supposedly in November. And that's shy of $300,000, right? $270, something like that?
$278, I believe.
Right. And then you got another, now you're taking another $100,000 out of just monies. So now you're, I mean, you're starting to inch your way up to the $5 million mark?
Yes.
I mean, and you're, you know, and what do we get out of the marina?
It's average like $46,000 a summer.
I have my budget, if you want me to go reference it.
No, no, I can.
It's right around $46,000 in boat slip rentals. But if those are fixed, I mean, right now you're shy really four rental spots because you have two fingers broken off right now. So if you, those are fixed, that's actually four more rental spots that can be filled as well. And on average, it's about $870 a boat that goes in there. I mean, so there's another 3,600 bucks right there.
If, if the incline gets any worse on that, we'll, we'll end up shutting off the bulk of that marina. Like I, it was borderline this year of the safety of that, letting it, letting it operate the way it did. It won't make another winter, not, and not be able to, to be able to navigate. We'll have to pull it out.
At one point, the, one of the, it was actually in the water.
Yeah.
So we're going back in exactly the way it is?
So we're repairing and replacing what was there.
There's another better way, maybe?
You know, I, I think we've looked at, Councillor Fisher, I, I don't know that, I don't know that any, any way is gonna be any better than what's in the, I think, I think the work that was done in there is good. It's just, you know, it, it can take, it gets some weather. No question.
Did they put the plastic over the pipes this year?
Plastic over pipes?
You know, there's like a, a plastic pipe that goes over the top of them, so it doesn't look as bad?
No, they're all just metal down there right now.
Well, do you want covers that?
Caps?
There were covers at one time.
Okay.
Just enhances the look of it. If you can be creative and come up with something that's even better than that, that'd be great.
Maybe we can put some owls on the tops and scare some of the geese away.
Okay.
Decorate in Christmas.
Decorate at Christmas time.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business? This brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business?
So as far as new business goes, obviously today the state is talking about shutting down Augsburg Correctional Facility. Whether that decision's been finalized or not, I'm not sure. But I think it's important, maybe that we put together a resolution for next council meeting, stating our disapproval kiss the ring, so to speak, of the governor, or whatever the hell we gotta do, so.
I spoke on the way over this evening with Mr. Kelly, the CEO of the Economic Development Authority. So we're gonna meet on Wednesday also to discuss what all the facts are. I feel, we, we didn't get a lot of facts. I learned about it from the, from the news media. And I think that's where a lot of other people learned about it, so I'm interested to know the, the exact language and what the, what the specifics are. There really was no, no information provided at all, best I can tell, so. So hopefully we can, I can get all that, so I can give you more facts and figures. Is it, is it a final decision? Is it a tentative decision? It appears in the language it's, it's final, but again, I haven't seen anything other than what was, what was released. There was a confirmation from the state correction officer spokesperson that was put out, but it was pretty, pretty generic language.
Well, last time, of course, the city pulled together and we rallied and rallied for weeks, marched in the office of the second floor, and we got them to change their minds. So I think we need to put together plans similar.
Sure.
And I think we need to try and save this prison.
We did one year, we did 2000 signatures, and Watertown closed. We had a lot of grief from South Dean and Mike Powers for doing that. And every time we wanted to do it this year or again, you know, you guys were very receptive of it.
Yeah, sometimes you just don't wanna draw attention to yourselves, and unnecessarily.
You don't let them know that it's important, and then they close it, mention, you rallied to tell them it wasn't. I think that's what's saying.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion. And the language does state that it'll be closed in its entirety by March 10th, 2022. But the, that they will effective immediately begin closure proceedings. Whatever they may mean by that.
This brings us to item of business.
Excuse me, I just wanted to have some discussion. Andrea and I wanted to talk about our next projects that we've got coming up. 420 Lafayette Street, start with that one. That is the property that is the part of the former St. Joe's Nursing Home Complex. So I know that we've had some discussions, so that's why I always feel like it's appropriate to talk to council when each one of these comes up. I feel like this RFP process is, is, is working for us. We've, I think we've got something good in motion for the Diamond property. I think we've got something equally good coming with the 17 Main Street property. So I just wanted to get council's thoughts on Lafayette Street. It's, it's not the run-of-the-mill, you know, small parcel that was left over or abandoned or something. It's a pretty big parcel of land in the center of the city. And just get your thoughts. Is it something that you're interested in allowing us some latitude to put through the RFP process, get it out there, see what comes back? Again, I appreciate council's leeway and patience with us doing these others, but I think it's making sense. We, Andrea and I certainly aren't proposing every property to go through this process, but I think, again, this one is, is pretty, pretty significant. It's right on the fringe of our Brownfield area. Again, it doesn't touch the waterfront or anything, but I think it's another one of those parcels that we would, we'd like to have the opportunity to try to find somebody that's gonna definitively do something with it. I don't think there's any doubt that somebody will buy that parcel of land, but potentially it, it sits there.
What is it zoned as?
Hey.
Yeah, I'm for an RFP. I think that it's a large chunk of land and the most, you know, whatever we can make the most beneficial, you know, investment in that area for the community is what's going to be best, whether it's any amount of ideas. I mean, the ideas that the public can come up with and private investors come up with surprise me all the time. So I'd love to see what interests or ideas are out there. any amount of ideas. I mean, the ideas that the public can come up with and private investors come up with surprise me all the time. So I'd love to see what interests or ideas are out there.
I, I don't know. I, I think might be getting crazy with the RFPs. So I'm, I'm putting really, it, it's surrounded residential all, all the way around that building and both sides, and on both sides of the street. I think it'll probably be best to be residential. And it's just like the Cherry Street Properties, what it was like eighty, ninety by seven hundred and something? Well, blocks only, I believe five hundred feet long. So it was longer than a block and I went for twenty-five hundred bucks on the chopping block. And out of fairness, I, I don't know if we should be just waiting for people to give us proposals or put it on it, on it. I mean, there was a reason to have a public auction and we've been auctioning off property left and right for two years and just sticking another RFP is, I don't know. I, I think it'll go faster. I think you get, we've had a lot of construction people here. Um, I think we've got a lot of local, you know, talent and investment. You know, it, it really wouldn't be a hard thing to subdivide that property and put in a new structure and a few basements in and, and then stick frame them the, right after that. And and boom, you've got a nice, nice lots instead of, the houses are on top of each other as, and pretty much all the way through the city. And every, every time, you know, like people are cheering when, you know, we lose one that's gets tore down in between and the, and the, the neighbors get to either split or buy it or, you know, and then they've got an adequate yard. I don't know. And there's two houses on that block, I believe, are for sale right now, which would also be a little bit of an enticement to somebody that wants to invest. So I don't know. I, I, I think, you know, if it was good enough for Cherry Street, I think it's good enough for Lafayette Street. I, well, everybody knows I prefer the public auction route. That's our local law says, as the state law says, and I just think it's a lot cleaner with someone bids on it, you get a check for it. You know, there's, it's not dragged out. It doesn't have a chance of falling through. Uh, there's less. Yeah, I, I prefer the public auction. I'd like to try the RFP. Uh, see where it goes. If it doesn't hit, try the public auction. But I think, I know when we tore that property down, we talked a, a lot of different things, maybe to see their pot potential. Apartments, maybe stores, things of that nature, right in the downtown center location. Maybe we'll get something. Maybe we, we don't, we don't have to hang on it forever as a, as an RFP, but we can try it once. If it doesn't go, then maybe try selling it. So that's my opinion.
I think just to add that is good, good incentive. Not let your staff recognize.
Yeah, I, again, I. Yeah, I, again, I don't, we, we, Andrea and I, we kind of pro and con this back and forth. I mean, I'm a little more prepared to, to battle for the waterfront stuff because I think that, that's stuff that's immediate and controlling. That's why I, I wanted to bring it now because I, I suspected there'd be some varying opinions on how we do this. So like, at the end, then I guess I need, I need direction from counsel though. So.
I just don't want somebody to sit on it. You know what I mean? No, I just, again, it's like, it was fair enough to do it on Cherry Street. So what's the difference?
That would be built on. Is that cleaned up? Like that can be built on for single family homes if nothing buried there.
And I, I just gotta say, I love that new podium. Very great.
It's very nice. I love, well, I love a podium. So the property is one point nine nine acres, two acres. So it does also qualify for the planned development district zoning. And there's, we are unaware of any contamination on the property. We did not have a phase two done on the property. It was an eighty-two bed nursing home. We did do a demolition of that. The foundation was allowed to be rubbleized after it was cleared of asbestos containing material and left on site. It was a cost savings measure.
No, I know. I couldn't remember. I know it was a while back, but I couldn't remember.
It's a mess under the ground. There's rerod. There's, I mean, it's going to pop up here soon enough.
So there's no contamination that we're aware of?
Not an asphalt, not an ideal building area to, to just decide to build a single family dwelling.
Bring an excavator and you can pretty much dig anything you want.
Yeah. And again, the good news is all that is at the moment, nothing known contamination. So you can, you can move stuff. I mean, it's. So I'll need a resolution to move this forward anyway. So it would be helpful if we just, you give me some definitive, or I can, I can just gin it up in a resolution for the next meeting and bring it back.
So we get three RFPs and three sales?
It sounded that way to me, but.
How many lots? If you ever said about it, how many lots could you get? What can you figure?
So for two acres? Six?
Six.
Well, the single family, so it's, it's zoned moderate density residential, MDR, which requires a minimum lot size of fifty-five by sixty. It has frontage on all four streets, I believe, actually. I'm not really sure that it lends itself to single family home development. You know, probably, but, but I'm not the developer. So multifamily is, is allowable in the moderate density residential as is, as is new single family. And then professional offices are also a permitted use within the district. That's obviously not an exhaustive list of uses that are permitted. We, we do have a, the RFP largely completed. I'd probably say it's seventy-five to eighty percent complete, but I did realize that it might not go that way. So I didn't invest in the remaining twenty-five percent. So it won't take long to, to finish that. If that's the route that council does want to go, that would provide the same level of detail that we have provided for the diamond site seventeen Main Street. With details on the zoning, the restrictions in terms of the uses, as well as the opportunities to develop it through a planned development district process.
Does staff have any idea on the price for it?
We haven't had the property appraised. If you wanted to just go the straight auction route, I, I would recommend for a few hundred dollars, you should probably look into having that done. It would be in the city's best interest.
I think that could be a great value if we had a, a development on it. Multiple families, duplexes.
Or offices or a lot of them.
I, I would, for my last input on this, and then I really, it's, it's not a, it's, it's a toss-up for us. I, I just, I, you all have to approve one method or another when we bring it. The only reason I'm bringing this and you will not see this repetitively from us, you're seeing it now because we're working on the properties that are pretty viable on the waterfront. But the only reason I, I bring this at all is because we, again, we just felt like it was one that kind of hit that threshold of it. It could be a bunch of things. And therefore, does it make sense for us to try to get somebody on the hook that we can then be able to negotiate going forward with? The planned development district designation there certainly, you know, it's, it's, it almost makes it wide open, if you will, for someone to bring something to the planning board and the planning board to have the authority to look at that. You know, and work their way through what, what makes sense without regard to a lot of restrictions perhaps. So I mean, I, again, I, Counsel Fisher, I, I understand your comments, understand everybody's, we, we, we're doing this more now just because we've got some of these ginned up now, but we've, we still have many more on the auction process and many, many more will go on the auction process and will go in this, this route. And I think as I've told counsel before, we're not going to let a lot of, a lot of daylight pass with these. We're going to put them through this process. If it, if it works, great. If it doesn't, we're gonna, our goal is to get these things off our books and into the hands of the private sector and back on the tax rolls as, as something. So.
Great name. Nice piece of property. Once you have a resolution, resolutions in Excel, something will go down. Like this.
Thing is, it's very, it's very busy downtown areas, you know? I mean, it's, it's a block into the residential's. Yeah. I just, I don't see single family homes going there. I think, I think we can work with somebody for plan development. And the time is right.
I just like, I also like the idea of the RFP because there's a defined, not generally defined timeframe where you can expect to see, you know, the investment, whereas if it goes to the private sector just in an auction, you may not even see that land developed and they could just buy it and sit on it. And that also is worrisome. Like, I'd like to actually see something done with it. So we can turn it into, you know, have some value for the city in it, whether it's in property tax, sales tax, things like that.
Well, an example would be a small scale Ford Street and Patterson. That went up for, it wasn't even an auction. We just sold it to them. And they put a lot of money in it and now, now there's a, the laser shop and T-shirt shop there. Getting back to Cherry Street, well, that was just purchased and they're going to pay tax on the twenty-five hundred bucks. And there's no telling how long that's going to sit. But it, it was good enough for there. It's not that much bigger. So.
It's substantially bigger. It's more than double the size. Just, just to be clear.
It's, it's a dimension that.
Yeah. The dimensions on Cherry Street were approximately sixty-three by seven hundred and four feet. It's, it's a, it's probably not something that we would realistically expect someone to come in and, and develop on. It was mostly, it, but it does meet the dimensions. So, so this property is substantially different. Like, again, it's about two acres in size. That is less than an acre in size. I, I don't want to be adversarial, but I, I do want to point out they are not the same size.
But again, a lot of the houses here, the average sixty, seventy feet wide. And they're on top of each other. You hear the people going up the stairs if you live next door to them. And, you know, that's one of the biggest downfalls of the city.
The average lot is thirty-eight by a hundred and twenty-two. Residential lot.
We'll, we'll bring it back for the next one. Uh, the next property is the Jackson Street Parcel, uh, which is immediately adjacent to the Fort Property. Uh, has waterfrontage, a little better than four acres of land. We have completed the, uh, we've, we've had the survey of the property completed, which I'll send to, to all of council. I mean, we follow the meetings. So you're familiar with the shape and size of what's there. The, the lot is adequately marked right now. If anybody wants to get out and see it, uh, the stakes are there, the flags are up, uh, marking all the, the important boundaries. So we do have some other work we need to, to do on that from a due diligence perspective, to come back to you with a recommendation. So I just wanted you to know if, if you'd seen the stakes and the flags, that, that is, that's us, we're doing that. And as, as most of you know, there was an agreement several years ago to transition that property to the fort based on a pretty rigorous set of conditions, none of which have we moved forward on it at all. Part of which the grant opportunity that was discussed in there has not been available in all those years. So I'll provide the, the legal opinion of kind of where we are with that, the lot dimensions, et cetera. And then we'll be coming back with a recommendation of what we, we think. Unlike the property, we were just talking about this, this property, we, we certainly expect there is, there's, there's certainly a potential for contamination. We've done no, no work, uh, site work or investigatory work on it. And I'm not sure that it makes a lot of sense for us to try to sell something without, without knowing some of that. But I need to just understand what, what our legal parameters are. We've owned it for quite a while. We're in the chain of, of custody, if you will, any way you slice it. So we sell it to somebody and it's contaminated and it has to work through some process there.
Is there a phase one?
There's, we've done nothing. It was all part of the discussion. I'll send counsel that agreement that was made with the fort. I think it was two thousand and seven or eight. No, I'm sorry. It was, yeah, two thousand and seven. So it's been a while. We've had some discussion with the forts on the, you know, the nature of that agreement, whether it's binding or not. So I'll send counsel that, but I just wanted you to know it's a, it's a valuable piece on the waterfront as we've kind of been moving our way through the waterfront. Uh, that, that piece is, is next on our list to make sure we've, we're moving in the right direction with it. So certainly we want to get something going with it. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a good piece of property right there, touching the waterfront. So that was more just a, by way of updates. That's all I have, ma'am.
And that brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if you're attending remotely, like to address counsel, please use the raisin feature.
The first individual is registered as Margaret Hagerty and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me?
A lot of feedback.
There. Okay. I'm sorry. So first of all, if we would just ask that, all of you can speak closer to your microphones. There are a couple of you that were not hearing very clearly. But what I wanted to say was according to St. Lawrence Public County Health Department, the guidelines to be followed for in-person meetings are on follow dot NY.gov. And they do say that in-person meetings are, are allowed and they've been allowed for some time. Also, according to a letter dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, on June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-one, the governor rescinded the executive order number two oh two point one, ending the declared disaster emergency and ending the suspension of the OML in-person requirements. So a member of a public body wishing to form a part of a forum or forecast or cast a vote in a meeting subject to the law held by video conference may all, may do so only if the public is permitted to be physically present with the member at the member's location. Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised.
We have a need for executive session tonight to discuss pending or current litigation and the medical and the medical financial credit for unemployment history of particular person or corporation for matters leading to the appointment, deployment, promotion, demotion, disband, suspension, dismissal or removal of a person or corporation. We anticipate there may be action. I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counsel Reish?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy? Yeah, approved.
Is, are we expecting anything to come out of that?
Coming back.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
are we taking action?
Do you have copies of those resolutions?
I don't. These for everyone, but I can certainly make them.
That's fine.
That's fine. It's, it's just.
How, uh, how extensive is, is there a way for you to settle this in a summary form with a good explanation, so everybody understands it, or is it not that long? I don't know.
Uh, let, let me read the summary, uh, counsel, and if it sounds good to you, and, yeah. A resolution authorizing and approving a settlement to an action related to the opioid crisis regarding defendants McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, Amerisource Burgen Drug Corporation, PSS World Medical Incorporated, Kinray LLC, Belco Drug Corporation, and American Medical Distributors Incorporated. This is a proposed settlement, uh, from the attorneys representing the city and many other municipalities, um, in the, in the opioid suit against the, uh, the nation's largest, uh, drug providers.
I'll move that. And the dollar amount, Steve?
Based on participation, uh, the city could receive up to sixty-seven thousand dollars in, uh, settlement funds. At this time, we are also going to be eligible to apply for other funds that are being made available to other entities, uh, for assistance in working through the, through this crisis.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved. Although I do agree, Dan, we should get more money. And I'd like to thank, um, at the time, City Councilor Price was the one who started this whole thing, so we get this money, we can say thank you for him and Sarah Purdy pushed this through and got it all filed. Okay, but, so thank you to them.
On this, thank you.
A resolution author, authorizing and approving a settlement agreement to an action related to the opioid crisis regarding defendants Johnson and Johnson, Janson Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, Ortho McNeil Janson Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, and Janson Pharmaceutica Incorporated.
And what are the details of that?
This is the same, uh, Counselor Reese, they just have the defendants broken into two groups.
So it's the same dollar amount, the same lawsuit, different defendants?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll move that as well.
I'll second.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Delaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Adjourn.